Okay, thank you everybody for your patience. Got a little bit, a little bit of housekeeping to do and we'll be right with you. Now that we're back in the live session, I would entertain a motion to proceed with recommendations of the attorney.
So moved.
For support with an additional possible fifty dollars.
No, it was a different number. There was a different number that had been discussed.
Yeah, that was part of his recommendation. Okay, very good. All right. Hearing that, if there are any other discussion, I have the clerk call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bunty?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
All right. All right, okay, sorry folks for the delay.
Mr. Perron, thank you very much for appearing this evening. We appreciate your assistance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have before us a petition from the village of Ashley to do some annexation. In order to do that, we have to enter into a public hearing. So that I would entertain a motion at this time, we would enter into a public hearing to hear.
So moved.
Support. Moving supported. Ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Bunty?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Okay, we have a petition before us from the village of Ashley that is asking us for our approval. Apparently this is what we need to do. I've never done one of these before. Our approval to allow them to take a portion of Elba Township which is located along a US 57. It's a parcel that gives a partial description there. What it is, is a, is a piece of farm ground. That's all they're asking for is that piece of farm ground. That's all that's indicated with the petition. Having said that, it is a public meeting and I'll open it up to comments. If anybody on the virtual wants to comment, that would be fine at this time.
Sir, my name is Monty Malik. I live near that parcel. That was my purpose on being on today. I looked at the public hearing notice and it appears that my property, which is right adjacent to the village currently, but in Elba Township, was taken out of that farm many years ago when I purchased the house. I just wanted to clarify that my property at this time is still Elba Township, not being annexed into the village. And also curious, as we have the discussion, you know, how will this be zoned? Is this going to be all commercial right behind my property, residential? Just questions I had about the annexation.
Okay. Village of Ashley, would you like to ask or answer the gentleman's questions, please? I don't hear you. Turn on. Unmute yourself. Ashley. Matt, help me out.
Yep, I invited them to unmute, so they should just have to approve it on their end.
Bottom left of the screen probably.
There should be a spot on your screen to unmute yourself. I don't know what you're using.
Maybe.
Well. You were working earlier.
You may need to make your window full size to see it.
It also should prompt you right on top of everything.
We're back. Sorry, we lost you guys. We did hear you, but we lost all the, everything else. So, Monty had a question whether the parcels that we are annexing in, I, we have parcel, this legal description that was on that. Did you happen to see that, Monty? At all?
Yeah, the two descriptions I saw, the one, the one description, the nine hundred feet or whatever, that seems to describe mine. And I'm assuming the other description is Cory's house next door to us, correct?
Yeah, those two. But,
In regard to his questions on zoning, we cannot do zoning until we have public hearings.
Whether it's commercial or, you want to know if it would be commercial property?
If his would be commercial property?
Folks, you have two questions before you. One, he wants to ensure that his property is not being entered.
It is not. It is not.
It is not in the part of the parcel descriptions, parcel one or two. It is not.
And his next, his next question is, what will this be zoned?
Well, we haven't, we haven't had a public hearing on zoning as of yet. You know, we are looking at, at, you know, probably putting some commercial in there. Part of the parcel will be for, to expand our lagoons. But, you know, until we get, until we go to the next step of getting this zoned in and do those steps, we, you know, that's what we're looking towards is probably commercial. So.
That's good.
Okay, you all set?
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah, the M 57 frontage, Bonnie.
Yeah.
Is there anybody else out there, Matt, that has a comment?
I'm not seeing anyone else, but if there is someone that does, I would ask that they go ahead and unmute themselves.
Okay. Then, do we as a commission have any questions of what they're trying to do? Basically, all it is, is they've taken a parcel out by US 57. They've purchased that parcel and now they want to be able to bring that in to the village of Ashley. The township of Elba does not have a problem with that. Obviously neither does the village of Ashley. What we are here for is because the law states that we have to okay that annexation.
I just think it would be a great asset for the village of Ashley. I, I live in that area and I just think it'd be a great asset for the village of Ashley.
So if we don't have anything else, in order to move things along, I would ask that we would come back out of public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing and return to the regular meeting.
Support. Any other discussion? Ask the clerk when she's ready to call the roll.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bunty?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Okay, folks in Ashley, well, you can proceed.
Well, I think we got it.
We need a motion.
Yeah, we gotta have a motion.
I, I make a motion that we, I'm adding myself. Along with the village of Ashley on the annexation of the property along M 57 in Elba Township.
Yeah, okay.
I'll second it.
Moving supported. Thank you for my showing us. Okay, any other discussion? Ask the clerk to call the roll when she's ready.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bunty?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes. Okay, now, village of Ashley, feel free to start the next wheel in motion.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate that, you guys.
Yeah, no problem. No problem. Okay. Let's move on to the consent calendar. The calendar board has communicated recommendations.
I move we accept the consent calendar as presented.
Support. Supported. Discussion. Ask that you would call the roll when you get time.
Commissioner Bunty?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Administrators report. You unmute yourself.
Thank you. Administrators report. This is going to take a few minutes because I would like to include in this report, a little bit of what has happened with the executive orders and the Open Meetings Act. So let me launch here. First of all, updating you on the airport project. As we've reported in past meetings, the airport authority assembled an advisory group to formulate recommendations for future airport operations, for funding of the airport and governance. That work has been completed and the advisory group recommendations have been forwarded to the airport authority. That authority meets next on Monday, October 26th at 5:30. I expect that this will be the subject of that meeting and will feature prominently. Commissioner Lambrecht will perhaps elaborate on that or comment, or as usual, correct everything that I've said. Regarding blight, we've finally gotten some, some movement on this. We're very pleased about it. You may recall that four townships are participating in the first pilot program for our collaboration on blight eradication, dealing with some of these blighted properties in the county. The four townships again are Wheeler, North Star, Elba, and Fulton. Two of the four boards have approved a blight ordinance and the other two will be presenting it to their boards in November. The next step is to draft an intergovernmental agreement between the county and the townships. I have a draft of that, need some work, but that, that work is underway. I'll be presenting it to you for approval and then of course it will go to each of the townships for their approval. I can't see that there's going to be anything in that that's going to surprise everyone. We've been talking about this program for over a year at this point. So I think we've, I think we've got it. It's my goal to have this thing up and running by the first of the year. That will mean all the documents in place approved by everyone, staff on board and so forth. And I'll, I'll continue to update you on, on this. Also, a received word today that at least through November 30th, our courts, the circuit district and probate courts will not hold jury trials. This also applies and is, the same thing is happening in the Clinton County courts as well. In the simplest of terms, this is because of the increase in COVID cases in Gratchit County. The resulting increase in emergency department visits and hospitalizations. Quoting a portion of Judge Sullivan's order for you, quote, "There's a concern amongst local health officials that the courtrooms could become a source of outbreaks and have advised against new jury proceedings at this time." Again, that's currently that extends through November 30th. I'm certain that everyone will reassess at that time and consider future steps. Okay, beyond that, I'd like to spend just a few minutes reviewing with you Senate Bill 1108 that was signed into law by the governor last Friday. 1108 addresses virtual participation in board meetings under the Open Meetings Act. It's important to begin this discussion with you now, for those of you that might not have had a chance to look at SB 1108. And since our last meeting and frankly right up through yesterday, there's been a lot of discussion of what's going to happen and then, okay, we see what happened, but now what does it mean? By way of review, the Open Meetings Act as interpreted by the courts is allowed for appearances by telephone, telephone, provided that a quorum of a public body is physically present. While one of you might be traveling, if we have three of you physically in the room, or if two of you are traveling, if we have had three of you in the room, then it's still represent, then still the board can take action on, on issues. I, I'm not aware of any dispute that telephone can be interpreted more broadly into the video conferences that we're using now. The governor's executive orders temporarily suspended the requirement that at least a quorum of the members be physically present. And that was because of the need to maintain safe distances between us, you know, for public health reasons and so forth. And again, whether you agree or disagree, that was the effect of that. So with the governor's executive orders having been nullified by the Michigan Supreme Court, the following questions were raised. First, what about those board actions that were taken between April 30th and October 16th? April 30th being the date that the the governor's executive orders would have expired had the law been interpreted differently and in fact, the way the Supreme Court ultimately integrated. But it's a big question, or the decisions that were made by you during that period also nullified. So that was going to require a whole lot of work. Second question is, given that COVID hasn't gone away, may public bodies continue to meet virtually with less than a quorum physically present? So, the Senate Bill 1108 has provided some clarification. It's been a little bit helpful. But of course, with every answer, you get two or three questions that arise. But for now, the bill does provide that between March 18th of this year and January 1st of this next year, it's okay, it was and is okay for you to meet wholly or partly by electronic means. So at the very least, this means that the actions you took during that period are valid and continue in effect. So that's really helpful. We had something we could do, could have done, but we're not going to have to do that. So the statute clarifies that question for us. Next calendar year, that is between January 1st and December 31st, you may hold meetings wholly or partly by electronic means if members are absent due to military duty, a medical condition, or a state of emergency declared by certain entities that would put the health and or safety of the public body members or the public at risk. So if we be a risk meeting, then there can be a local order that would allow us wholly or partly to meet electronically. It's more limited than next year and, so it's more limited next year and it is more narrow yet in 2022. That's so far away right now. I'm not even going to bother to discuss it and who knows how many changes might be made between now and then. But there, there are a number of notice requirements about the presence and absence that Angie and I are going to have to figure out and comply with. And we were, we're going to need more communication from each of you about when you're going to be attending physically versus not. We'll need some information for you. So we'll need to change our practices around communication on that. So as I said, with, with each answer comes many questions and I'm just going to continue to broaden my understanding of this in the coming days. A, a quick note about other emergency order provisions. The governor's orders also limited crowd sizes, the wearing of masks and other protective provisions. Now, many of these restrictions are continuing under the authority of an emergency order issued by the director of the Department of Health and Human Services. That order was dated October 5th. This order limits gathering sizes, requires the wearing of masks indoors except under certain circumstances. So those things continue. But there's additional authority in the rules of the Michigan Occupational Safety and Health Administration. You hear it called MIOSHA. That, the director there issued emergency rules dated October 14th, essentially reminding us that employers have to provide employees a safe and helpful work environment, that we have to provide a place of employment that is free from hazards. It requires something, the requirements in that emergency rule parallel the preparedness and response plan that the governor required of us last spring. So we prepare a plan, I put together a work group, we discussed that plan, we had it in front of you for approval and that took effect on June 1. So the things that we're doing here, the enhanced cleaning, requiring of masks, the the hand sanitizer units, the health screening of the security station, all of that continues to be permitted and in fact, even required under that rule. So three bottom lines for this moment. You have the authority to meet remotely. You've had it since April 30th. And therefore, the actions that you have taken since that time are in effect and don't need to be ratified at a future time. You may continue to be remotely until the end of this calendar year, although there are some additional and different notice requirements that are coming up. And third, remote meetings are okay next calendar year, although there are going to be some additional restrictions and we will keep you apprised of those things. So that would conclude my administrators' report.
Tracy, I mentioned this before. I, when we give this airport report, I guess I just don't want to have it come to us and say, this is the best deal we got. It's yes or no. I mean, I, I guess I'd like a little spoon feeding along the way to see how we're doing and what we're all thinking because I think this is, is going to be a big thing for the county and, and how we manage this thing and then how we, what our part's going to be in it, whether we're going to operate it, whether we're going to be a partner in it, whether we're going to just contribute money and somebody else is going to partner in it. I guess I hate to just have it come one day and say, here it is, and it's yes or no. And, and I don't know if there's any way you can, it, it sounds like we're getting closer to have some resolution, but.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what, what, what you're referring to, Sam.
The airport, it's, it's,
Oh.
I don't want, I don't want it to, for me personally, anyway.
I got you.
Just all of a sudden come one meeting and say it's on here and we're going to approve this and, and I guess I want a little more information of whether we're going to be, we're thinking we're going to operate it, whether they're going to, we're going to pay for it and somebody else is going to operate it. I mean, what, what ways are we leaning? And I don't know if, you know, I mean, we've got some authorities, we've got some other folks out there. I just don't want it to come and say, this is the best deal we could get. Yes or no?
That's a great reminder, Sam. And yeah, that's a great reminder. And Tim, I wonder if there's anything that you can offer on this? I know that to the extent that when I am asked to do some work on it, I'm trying to report out to you. I know that Tim, in some of his commissioners' reports, is reporting out to you. But Tim, what would you add? And maybe you and I would need to make this a regular agenda item at each meeting or maybe we should look at something like that.
Yeah, well, so where we're at right now, you know, is for all intents and purposes, you know, the airport authority, even though two members of the airport authority have, you know, petitioned essentially to withdraw from the authority, the airport authority is still, you know, the official entity that is running the airport. And so, right now, and so we created this, you know, we appointed this task force, you know, to kind of look at what a, a new organization would look like. And the general consensus amongst the airport authority is they would like the county really to be the entity. Now then the devil's in the details about, you know, well, what does that look like, Sam? And I think that's kind of what you're getting at. And so what the meeting Tuesday will be, so, so the, the, this ad hoc committee has, has drafted, you know, what, what they see as kind of a broad outline of how the airport should and could be run. The airport authority then will look at that at this meeting we've got coming up on the 26th and either say, yeah, this, this, this is what we like, or maybe they're going to tweak it or change it or whatever. Assuming that they like it or they come up with something, they come up with a minor modification to it that doesn't go back to this ad hoc committee, they're going to pass it on to us and then, you know, we're going to say, you know, we either kind of like this idea, now there's some things we need to do in order to make it happen, or no, we want to make some changes to it. And, you know, it's kind of like that old thing, how a bill becomes a law. You know, right now it may get passed back and forth between us and the airport authority a couple of times, or we may just find that there's a general consensus around it. Then, you know, there's a bunch of things that need to be done before we kind of get to the point where if we're doing lion's share of managing, running, financing, paying for the airport or whatever, there's a bunch of things that have to be done in between. And, and that's kind of the devil in the details question, I think, Sam, that you're kind of getting at. You know, there's everything from, you know, you know, what does the, you know, the, the legal you know, piece look like in terms of property ownership? Because, you know, right now, there, it's actually a couple pieces of property and it's in the hands of either the city or the county. That was supposed to be turned over to the airport authority by one of the motions that created the authority, but it never happened. So there's like questions like, all right, does the airport authority have to take hold of that in order to pass it on to us? Stuff like that. You know, there's the question of, right, if we're going to take that on, you know, how do we transition that fiduciary responsibility, which right now is essentially being fulfilled by the city of Elma and Eric Ripley? And so that's kind of the exploration piece that's, that's got to happen that, that'll also, you know, get us closer towards what this thing actually ends up, ends up looking like. But kind of the idea is until both the airport authority and the county agree on kind of a general framework of what this is going to look like, it doesn't make any sense to do any of that other stuff, you know, because some of that stuff's going to cost them money because it's going to involve some legal fees and some of it will require, you know, talking about, you know, positions or a position or a change in the job description of, you know, the existing airport manager. So, so that's kind of the next step, you know, is, is, is that type of detail stuff, I think, that you're kind of wondering about, Sam. So I think to answer your questions, long answer, but it's not, I don't think it's going to be a one and done kind of thing with that, all right, you know, we, we, we're now it, you know, when it comes to the airport and the airport authority is off the hook. It's actually, I see it as being, even if we're really pushing this thing, I see it as, as being a a multi-multi-month transition because there's just a bunch of things that have to be resolved. And some of those things may get tricky, you know, I mean, we may agree in principle, but, you know, even something as basic as, you know, the land ownership, you know, so, so for example, if we're going to take on responsibility or greater responsibility for the airport, you know, we, we really need some type of authority over the property that the airport sits on. So what does that look like from the city of Elma's perspective? You know, do they write us a a lease or give us a lease for 10 years, 20 years, 50 years, 100 years for a dollar? Do they just give it to us? Do they want to keep it? Because they're saying, hey, you know, someday there might be solar out there and, you know, we might want a piece of that action. So there's just a lot of, there's a lot of like detailed questions that, that have got to be worked out. But I think the first step is just to agree kind of in principle to this broader picture.
But Sam, I, I hear you in that, you know, very thorough description of the steps involved in all of this and current thinking, but, but I hear you addressing wanting some reports as we go and kind of not to be caught by surprise on this. And what I would be happy to do is to touch base with you yet this week and find out exactly what form that could take. If you're providing these more thorough reports, each meeting would be helpful, but I'd be happy to talk with you kind of offline here about the communication piece. Would that address the concern you raised?
Well, yes, I think so. But, but, you know, I look at like the, the two entities that want out. We paid for a study and I'm really not sure if there, I mean, there was a real big legal thing, but the grants and the monies and who pays what back. I, I guess today right there, I'm not sure they legally can get out. You know, I've never heard defend, definitely that, that these two townships can get out, you know, and, and can they get out and not be obligated, you know? There's just some stuff like that. And I understand you got to work out this land problem, but you probably got to set some thought about how, who's going to end up with the end game, how the end game is going to look like and let's make all that property and all that stuff work out to be there. But, you know, we don't, I guess I don't know if I've ever seen numbers, how much this thing takes in or what it operates. You know, I just think there's a lot before we want to obligate our county to, to run in this thing, you know? And, and I, and I think we could probably do it, but we, we, we need to look at it, I guess. I guess I don't know anything about airplanes or airports, but I just don't want to take it on and all of a sudden it's a debt and then Elma comes back in 10 years saying, hey, they got solar out there. I guess we want it back, you know, or because that, that might be an obligation that we would want to help offset some of the costs and that's what's going to be, you know? If that's a possibility, I guess I don't even know that is.
There's some other historical materials that are coming to mind as you raise these points, Sam. And I, I think I could be, I could help with this by ju- just putting together a little packet for, for each of you and because it's either the Articles of Incorporation or some bylaws, I can't remember which, that do address this, this desire by certain member entities to leave the authority. So I, I need to put that together and get that in front of you.
I guess, for me, there's no real timeframe. I guess, you know, for me, there's no real timeframe, but I, I guess, I just don't want it to have happened to come. Six months from now, we're having a meeting on the Airport Authority, we're gonna decide whether some outside folks have said, we're gonna take it over, this is how it works, and yes or no, do you want to take it, you know?
Yep.
And, and I, because I'd hate to say, I don't know enough about it at that time, and they said, well, geez, you should have asked us six months ago. You know, so I'm, I'm asking now, I guess, you know, and I don't want to be a pain about it or anything, but I, I just think it's prudent to look at it and make sure that we're all on the same page and kind of leading on the ro- right rope.
Yep.
I'm still a believer in the airport, I think we need it, and we just gotta figure out how it runs. Because I don't like the same stuff.
Yeah, I think I hear you, and, uh, got some ideas about what I can do now, and then I'll continue to check in with all of you uh, as we go down the line about what additional information you think you might want, making sure we're getting reports to you and so forth. So, uh, it has made a note on my, uh, notepad here, which means it's as good as done.
There you go. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Any other questions for Tracy? Uh, we'll move on to committee reports. Chuck?
I don't have anything, I've been busy with the election. Just want to say we're anticipating a record turnout and Angie's assured me we are gonna have plenty of ballots.
Well, I think Tracy covered the airport, and so we won't rehash that ground, but, uh, uh, Arcade Township, the thing they've got going on is, uh, you know, they're, they and some of the other townships and some of the municipalities are working on a new fire and rescue authority. And it, it's just kind of interesting as they're going down that road, it's kind of like what, what we're doing with the airport where, you know, there's an existing program in place and they're trying to move it to a different place, but, you know, they can't do that until, you know, certain things are done and every, you know, because, you know, you, right, if you got insurance on a, on a fire truck, you know, you can't have a gap where there's no insurance on the fire truck and, you know, so it, it's kind of funny, as I was sitting in the audience, listening to it, you know, it kind of reminded me of, you know, all these things that have to be done. It sounds simple, you know, we'll just kind of transition to this other, this other model, this other governance model, but, but then you realize, well, you know, it's not just flicking a switch, you know, everything's, there's gotta be this, this transition. So they're, they're talking about, you know, again, this, this thing's probably gonna take, you know, into the spring, you know, before it, it actually happens, but it sounds like there's a lot of buy-in for it. And, you know, I, I think they believe that it will generate better response times and, and, uh, and, and so that's, I guess that's a good thing.
Back to the Fire Authority, a couple of our townships are involved in that too, and I think it's gonna be a good thing when they get it hammered out. And you're right, word of the trucks said, who ensures them, who does this? They got a lot of mechanical stuff to work out. In, in North Shade, they, they got all the windmills are up down in Southern Gresham County. I'm amazed. Consumers has got everything up. They're all, and they're gonna be testing them in December. They're gonna be testing them for power. Uh, it's just an amazing thing how quick they got these things done. About the only thing they gotta do is move these big, heavy cranes out. I think you'll see some of that building stuff out on Water Road to go down. Um, but they think they'll have these things up and running and putting power out first quarter of next year. They're putting another tower up. Uh, it's a, um, something to do with the, the airport, the airplanes and stuff like that. They've got the newest and best operation consumers is putting in there. So that tower's gonna be erected. The tower out to Rainbow Lake, they just got approval in Fulton Township, uh, to put that up for the communications tower, and then they're gonna try to get Verizon to go on that tower. But it's gonna be at 800 megahertz things. Uh, our county police cars don't get any service down in Rainbow Lake, south of 57 in that area. So, uh, that tower was given to the township, apparently come out of Monroe, and the state's gonna put it up there. And, uh, so that's all set to go. And as I say, the county just, uh, the planning commission just approved that and put that up. So they're getting started on that.
My wind turbines went up.
Well, last night they said there were 60 in New Haven, or 60 in North Shade, and I think 64 in New Haven, about 124, 125 total. But they're all erected, all the mechanical's done on them, they're just doing some wiring and some of that stuff. The building, they're gonna, they're gonna test these before they get the building done in Middleton. That's all up there. Asphalting the other day, got it all closed in. There's two big buildings there. It's gonna be, for those two townships, it's gonna be pretty good.
Good. Jan?
Um, I went to Bethany Township, um, last Tuesday, and they're getting ready for the election also, expecting to be very busy. Um, I think that's probably the talk of the county is getting ready for this election. And, uh, God, I'm busy every day. I don't know what I'm doing every day, but I'm busy.
There you go.
Uh, we do have a lot of meetings coming up in November. George, you're on a lot of those meetings with me. Once mobile medical response.
Okay, um, I attended the North Star Township meeting, Monday last, um, normal meeting. Farmers were there because it was pouring down rain. So, North Star had to cancel their meeting because they didn't have a quorum because the farmers were in the field. That's just part of the process. Elba Township went to their meeting, they had a Blight Ordinance, uh, meeting and public hearing. Uh, while I was there, Tracy showed up. Uh, Tracy was very helpful, answered a lot of their questions that they weren't quite sure on, and, and, uh, so as a result of that, Elba Township did pass their ordinance. Um, so that's all good. Fulton Township, by the way, I think, can't remember if they passed it.
I don't think it passed last week. I know they're talking.
I think they're, I think they're supposed to pass it in November.
I don't interrupt you, but Elba Township, I was out at one of the, I hit a deer the other day in my car and they're gonna fix it, and, but they're cleaning up. They're cleaning up already because they're gonna get ahead of the curve, they said. I went out of banister and, and they're cleaning up. There's four big properties there and got an excavator thing in there, a guy hauling junk out of that one house there, it's just past the bar. And they just said, you county guards are coming on us. I thought, that's good. Let's get it cleaned up.
That's effective. That's called effectiveness, you know.
I, I didn't even think it'd pass or anything.
They know, we're not even playing, we're not playing games here, you know, it's.
I said, we got the attorneys. So I said, it's not a matter of the townships gotta hire anybody, we got them.
Yeah.
I said, you're paying them, so you might as well pay to clean this thing up.
Oh, good. All right, move on. Um, Keegan, I believe you're up next. I don't know if I can see it here. Are you gonna bond board?
Hi.
There you go. How you doing?
How's everyone doing?
Good. What's up?
Good, all right. So, uh, I've got the 2020 apportionment report, uh, today. So basically, uh, this report, it's a complete summary of the taxable value, millage rates, and special assessments levied within each township and city in Gresham County. Uh, the responsibility of the board is to approve the certification and spread of these millage rates upon the taxable value across the county. Um, so, before I, uh, get into the actual, uh, report, I just want to give an acknowledgement to Diane Thomas in our office. Uh, she did pretty much all of the work on this report, I'm just presenting it. Uh, and she did a awesome job. It's not easy getting all the, uh, 4029s, the millage, uh, reporting sheets from all the jurisdictions, so she did a great job with that. All right, um, so, does everybody have a copy of the, uh, apportionment report?
I got, and it's just a letter. How come I don't have the report?
Well, the report is small, so I do have a, uh, spreadsheet with the values on there. Uh, if that's easier, I could, uh, put it up on my screen.
Yeah, would you?
Yep.
Page 159.
All right, can everybody see that?
Yeah.
Alrighty, so this, uh, this first page here is, uh, giving a breakdown of all the millage rates across, uh, the county and all the individual townships and, uh, cities and villages. Um, so the first, uh, part I want to show you here is, uh, this first column. So this is for the entire county. Got our taxable value here. Uh, this is our, uh, operating, uh, millage. And then this right here, this column, this is the, uh, tax dollars that that millage brings in. Uh, then we've got our voted in millages here, then that's the tax dollars that, uh, those, uh, millages bring in. And then, right here is the total estimated, uh, tax dollars for Gresham County coming in this year. And, uh, below that is all the individual townships, and they're the, uh, in the same format. They've got their taxable value, uh, their millage rates, the tax dollars being brought in by those millage rates, the voted millage rates, then the tax dollars brought in by them, and then the total tax dollars over here. Uh, and I don't know if we, if anybody wants to go through any individual, uh, townships or anything like that, um, and if I'm going too fast at all, please tell me to slow down.
As long as you're satisfied and the numbers are right.
Yep. Yep, we went over them a couple times and everything looks good.
I couldn't, I couldn't tell you what they were or not.
Yeah, it's, um, so basically, uh, each, uh, township and, uh, the county and all the school districts, the community colleges and everything, uh, they fill out, um, a form called the L4029, and it's basically, uh, um, listing what millages they're gonna be levying in their township, and that's what we're reporting on here. It's all those forms basically condensed into one.
Keegan, with the windmills coming in in these two townships, um, they were appraised last year. I, I think they got some appraisals done just for, you know, limited work that they had done. I know they got some of that stuff. And then this year they'll come through, but if they're not running, we won't get really full appraisal until next year when they're up and operating in December?
Um, I believe, I would have to check on how, uh, much the windmills went on the roll. I don't think that any of, um, the ones in, uh, North Shade and New Haven were on the roll last year. I believe a lot of them were on at 50%, and then the ones on 50% last year will come out 100% this year. And, um, I'll have to check on where, uh, what percentage of those are gonna come onto the roll.
How, how do we get that number? Is that number just come from them for the personal property tax? It costs us as much as, or did you hire a windmill appraiser, or how does that work?
Um, for the total, like appraisal, or the value of the windmills?
Yeah.
Uh, so that comes from the local assessor, or the township assessor. And, uh, exactly how they get that number, I, uh, I can, uh, get with you back.
That's okay. I was, I was just wondering how that number's established. It's gotta be some form, or if you get an 80-foot one, or a 500-foot one, or whatever.
Yeah, they have a, uh, they have a valuation form, which it, uh, where you put in the, um, uh, I guess the size of the windmill, uh, and the year it went on the roll, and that'll apply the correct depreciation and everything to it.
I see.
But as far as where that form gets the numbers of value-wise, I could, uh, do a little more research and get back with you on that.
That's all right. I just know there's something out there that probably tells you what they're worth, but based on size.
Yep.
I didn't know that was something you did, or you helped the township assessors do that, or what?
Yep, the township assessors do that, um, we assist them with it if they haven't needed any help, but mostly that's on them.
All right, thanks.
Hmm, yeah, no problem.
Okay. Any other questions? Then Keegan's asking us to approve the report.
So there's, uh, there's a couple more pages on here. I don't know if anybody.
If you think we're interested, go ahead.
Um, so I can go through them quick, and if, uh, anybody is interested. Stop me and we can go over it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so the next, uh, page here is the, uh, authorities, the DDAs, um, and there's only one that's in Elma. And so, uh, they're, uh, collecting, it looks like 1.9716 mills on that, uh, DDA. I believe with the DDA, the taxes collected, go right back into that, uh, for the development. And, uh, so that one, I guess, isn't too much going on there. Uh, the next page is the, uh, school districts. Um, so here, values, down here is the, uh, a little farther, actually, uh, the, uh, tax dollars they'll bring in. We have our, uh, community college, and then the intermediate school districts. And then, uh, so this page, um, is, uh, fairly interesting, just because this is, uh, so it shows the total, uh, millage rates, depending on where you live. Um, so let's say, uh, for example, uh, if you're in Arcade Township and school code 29010, and you have the homestead rate, uh, your total millage rate is gonna be 28.6209. That's something we get calls on quite a bit, is just people wondering what their millage rate is, so, uh, we'll share this sheet with them. Um, and then the only other page is the, uh, special assessments. In your packets, there should also be a, uh, sheet. Um, so basically, these are the millage rates as they are right now, um, after the, uh, election on, uh, November 3rd. Um, there is some that could be changing, so if anything changes, I'll, uh, amend the report and bring it back. List at the, uh, end of this, that, uh, I think there is five different, um, changes that could possibly take place. So we just have those listed and, uh, the millage rates that they could affect.
Okay. Any questions? All right then. We will need a motion to, uh, approve the report.
Support.
We've supported. Any other discussion?
You know, it's amazing, I've watched these over the last 12 years, and the impact of the windmills when people say, and I, and I know we've all heard it as commissioners, well, what, you know, what do we get out of those windmills, you know, and, you know, the, the increase in taxable valuation, you know, in some of these townships and in terms of what it generates for them, in terms of the school districts, you know, for the school districts, you have any type of building millage or anything out of the books, it's just tremendous.
Yeah, it's a lot.
The schools, the schools really, the schools really, on the windmill side of it, they go pretty good.
Yep.
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 Pretty good for them.
Any other questions? Any none? I asked the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Buckt.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert.
Sorry, so I was still mooted, yes.
Commissioner.
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Keegan, appreciate it.
All right, I really appreciate it. I apologize if I, uh, put anybody asleep there.
Always interested.
I beat you to it, Keegan.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, uh, application of union negotiating, negotiated wages.
Well, you know, I've, I've just been pondering how I can present this to you in a way that makes sense. And this is one of these issues that seemed simple on the surface, and, um, I provided Jennifer Wood an answer and some, just an answer, which as I dug into it seemed less clear. Uh, that may be why she's online tonight, because she wonders what the heck I'm gonna say next. But this is one of those issues that once I began to dig into it and to look at some history, it became interesting and murky. I prepared a memorandum for you, and I hope you've had a chance to look at that because that will help. The questions in front of you are, should non-union employees who are incorrectly paid, they're on the wrong pay scale, arguably, should they be moved to the proper pay scale? And before I go to the next questions, I want to dig into that question. Carrie, uh, ran some numbers for me today, this afternoon, and she's handed them in to you. Terry, uh, ran some numbers for me today, this afternoon, and she's handed them into you. It's, uh, three sheets, you know, full of these, these numbers. In the top right-hand corner, you will see page numbers. And I want to refer first to page one. This is captioned non-union, not opt-out, not court employees, but they're paid on the TPOAM pay scale. So let me take as an example, uh, a Becky Clark and she's the third, uh, employee listed there. Becky is not in the union and not eligible to be in the union because she's what's called a confidential employee. For some reason, Becky and all of those twenty nineteen others that are listed there, although she's not union and although she's not, you know, her function with court, court operations, she is on the TPOAM pay scale. By the way, it's odd enough that we only have these two pay scales and now a third of that executive class that, that you approved. I don't know, last year, maybe earlier this year. So this, this is odd because, and I, I indicated in the union, who is in the, or excuse me, in the memorandum, who is in the GLC union, who is in the TPOAM union? And you can see that TPOAM are court people. So for however long and for reasons that I can't determine, these folks are on the TPOAM pay scale rather than the GLC that would make more sense. Because again, they're not county or excuse me, court, I'm going to make this as hard as I can. They are not cap court employees, but rather are doing more just kind of general county functions. So there are twenty of them that are listed there on that page one. And you can see that, and the reason this matters, of course, is that the GLC pay schedule is higher than the TPOAM pay scale. So for a Becky Clark, use her as an example. On the TPOAM scale, she is paid at twenty dollars and thirty-nine cents an hour. If she were on the GLC pay scale, she would be making twenty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents an hour. The difference there is a dollar nineteen an hour. And then the final column shows the annual cost of that increase, just about twenty-five hundred dollars. So the overall impact, if you decide to move these folks to the other pay scale, would be thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred fifty-three dollars in the first year. So, um, and this, this really is your first question because it will matter for the second question. So I will, I'll stop and ask if you have questions about what that issue is and, and what I'm talking about. Okay.
Explain to me why, now why they cannot be in the union? Do they, can they opt out?
No, I'm not talking about the opt-outs. Um, I'm talking.
Talking about the, these so many employees on page one. None of them have an opportunity to be in the, like, like, isn't Kelly King just an employee in the treasurer's office?
She's a deputy clerk. She's a deputy treasurer.
Deputy treasurer, okay.
Deputy treasurer. There are certain criteria for being eligible for union membership or not being eligible for union membership. And Tim, you're going to be able to help me out with this, but correctly.
Typically, uh, if you supervise, you, uh, a, a union employee, you can't be in that same union because of the potential conflict there. So.
Slightly different issue because we've got some folks that are just not in a union. If they were to be, they shouldn't be in that union. Let me say too, that I feel pretty sure we don't have everybody correctly designated for, for union participation or not, but that is a big issue for another day. But there are some, if you, if you supervise, if you have hiring and firing power, um, if you, if you are a confidential employee, and that's why I chose Becky Clark as an example. Matt Hewitt is another. He's a confidential employee. He accesses information that is, is, is confidential. Uh, Terry Ball is a confidential employee because she deals with all kinds of human resources, stuff and documents. So those are a variety of reasons why someone might not be in a union. But for some reason, we don't have a separate pay scale for those folks. We've just adopted TPOAM or GLC. And for these twenty folks, we've put them all on TPOAM. Did, was that helpful, Sam?
Yeah.
Okay, not everybody can be in the union, you know, just because they work for the courts for the county. So, but this first question in front of you is, you know, shall we take these folks and anyone for the future and bump them over to the other pay scale? A- and I, I suppose it's not a problem if we don't. It just doesn't make sense really. Yeah, we, yeah, it, it just doesn't make sense. Um, so that's, that's, that's the threshold question for you. And, uh, Mr. Bailey, I might suggest, I, I'm going to offer the suggestion that you discuss that and make a decision about this before we get into the rest, uh, unless that's not your pleasure.
Well, as long as, as long as our decision now doesn't affect anything else we're going to look at.
Well, if we, um, to the extent that we, uh, provide, um, payouts and, um, uh, increases on the base, if you decide to provide it to this group of employees, the percentages will be higher because the number they're calculated from will be higher.
Yeah. I, I forgot to ask, is Chris on the line? Yes, I got him.
President.
What do you name?
What we're looking at here is some changes we're going to have. If we, if we affirm this, we'd, we'd have to make changes. I assume you've seen all these numbers and you're comfortable with them?
Chris, I, I, I don't know if you've seen them. You were working with Terry earlier today.
No, I have not seen them.
The, uh, well, the, the final impact is, uh, the numbers I've been given, thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars for the year, um, if you make the change as to these twenty employees.
Right.
You know, the other thing you can do is you can just think, well, you know, it's been going on all this time. We don't have it budgeted this year. It could take effect, you know, in the next, uh, budget year. So you've got options there.
Yeah. Well, they may want to discuss this for a minute before me.
Well, you know, I mean, I have a thought on this and, you know, I, I'd like to think that I think the same way regardless whether it would help our employees, you know, positively or whether it would impact them negatively is, is, you know, if this is how we've been paying them and this is kind of how we've, you know, how we've, you know, managed their employment all this time. I, I think, you know, again, I kudos to Tracy for catching this, um, you know, and I'm sure we caught it because now, you know, for this, for what, the, the few times we've got, you know, slightly different settlements between the two unions. But I don't think that by itself is, is an argument for, you know, incurring a fairly significant additional expense, not just for this year, but for every year from this point onward. And, and I'd say the same thing if it was, hey, you know what? We're actually paying these guys more than we're supposed to be paying them. They should be in this other scale. And I would say the same thing. I'd say, well, you know, we've been paying them all along on that scale. We need to keep them on that scale because that was, that's the terms of the employment that they've been operating under. And that's really what they expect. I don't think, you know, there's a real windfall. I mean, I'm sure they'd appreciate it. And if any of them are watching around, they're going to shut up, Lambrecht, but, but, uh, that's.
I'm, I myself don't feel comfortable about changing this right away. I understand the error and understand the need to do it. But we have to, we have to have some conversation about what the impacts are going to be down the line here.
Right. And I would even call it an error, George, from the standpoint that it is an anomaly, I think you could call it, but it is not necessarily an error in that, you know, they are not union employees.
But they were just classified or put in the wrong union. I mean, as far as their pay scale.
Once upon a time, yeah, somebody said, all right, well, we'll base their pay on this. And again, they, maybe they had good reason for it. I, I, you know, it, it, I'm sure it predates all of us. You know, it kinda, it is what it is. And so.
Let me say too, that you fixed this. Part of the problem too, is that you really don't have a classification system in this county.
Yeah.
And that creates a lot of these problems. You have chief deputies in two different departments being paid at different rates. Now, I haven't come to you for that overall study because it'll be expensive and, um, you know, perhaps one day I will, but we won't have these problems if we have a classification system um, and compensation tied to it the way we now have for, you know, a handful of our employees.
This is what I'd like to bring up is that every year we go through this. And every year I think that we've got it all solved and then here we are again. I would like to see maybe a couple of commissioners do this, help do this study, kind of go over and, um, I don't think we need to hire somebody and pay out thousands of dollars. If we're going to do, we're going to pay out thirty, forty thousand dollars, we might as well do it. But I think that this is something that we could sit down and, um, start going through these. But we need to come up with a system that we don't have to keep changing it every year, every year, every year.
It's been changed for a long time.
Last year we had the same problem with, um, uh, the, the money not, I mean, some people needed to step up and, I mean, we're constantly, we don't have any kind of a system where somebody's here so long, they should be moved up to a certain level. Or they have a title, but they're not, they're making less money than somebody that doesn't have a, a title. And that's where I think that we have to look at this a little bit more carefully and come up with some kind of solution to where it's fair with everybody and that we don't have to keep going through this every year.
So. Anybody's got anything else to add?
I'd be well.
It just sounds to me like we need further study on this is what I'm hearing.
Well, I'm.
Well.
I, I know what we have to do and, and it's probably proper to do this, this way, but it's not. We've already, we've already set our budget. There's going to be some budget adjustments, I know, but there's going to be, you know, I just think it's, I like to do things within a budget year as best as possible.
Well, a lot of the stuff, this is why you have a, a budget or a finance meeting is that this stuff should be.
Well, it's not necessarily going to come out of the budget and the finance.
That's where we used to do all this at.
If I might address, um, Commissioners Bun, Commissioner Bunting's comment about, you know, are doing this ourselves and internally. That this, to do class comp work, i- it's, it's an incredibly uh, technical and complicated field. And, you know, there is the scoring of each position based on, you know, knowledge, for example, the, the skills required for the position, the extent to which, uh, a position supervises other people and there's, you know, scores and formulas and all that sort of thing. And i- it really isn't something I think that can be correctly done and have long-term or enduring impact. So that kind of study, I, you, you know, I, I can send out an RFP and get you numbers and yes, it will be expensive. Mark Notley had actually recommended this when he was doing the earlier study for us. But.
I'm sorry.
Mark Notley was the contractor who did the class comp study of the, what was it, fifteen or so positions uh, that you approved, I think it was earlier this year.
We also did one back when Jeff Hoff was here, his brother, this is what he did and we hired him to do a study. So in the last, uh, what, five years, six years, we've had what, two studies? But what I'm saying is what do other counties do? How, other counties have the same people that we do. And what are the, can we, you know, call like Shawassee County, maybe Saginaw County and ask them, how, how do they do their system? Is this something that, uh, I'd be glad to work on this committee. I've got lots of time. But, um, I just know that it seems like every year we, we start giving people step increases and then we find out that two or three other people were left out. This should be an automatic thing that when somebody's here or gets promoted, that, that, and then also it has to be, I'm sure that whatever the titles we have here in this county, they have them in every single county in the, in the state of Michigan.
Actually, that, that's not entirely, uh, the case, uh, Jan, because we actually run into this when we're trying to get you salary comps when we go into union contract negotiations. You know, what are the folks over in comparable counties, comparable size counties? You know, what are they making? What does this position make or that position make? And, you know, we have some trouble drawing, um, the, the parallels and being sure. Um, that, so i- it's not as clear cut as that. Because, because again, we do do that work when we go into, uh, contract negotiations and we have resented that work to you, uh, each year that I've been here.
Well, a- and I think maybe to clarify kind of what, what the issue is before us. And normally, you know, this issue would be, under normal circumstances, you know, GLC and TPOAM, you know, you know, they get an increase. And it's essentially kind of a formality. We grant that same increase, you know, to the non-union employees. But in this particular case, this year, we had slightly different contracts in terms of what, what those members received. And consequently, then the question becomes, right, so wh- what do we give them? And I think this, and then, then came this issue of, you know, actually, we're paying these people on the other scale, even though they work kind of in the place where that union works. And, but I, I think, so I think it's, it's a different issue kind of Jan than what you're talking about, which is, you know, you're right, we do do, um, you know, you know, people come to us, but that's just, department heads can do that, you know, with classifications and, and saying, because, because responsibilities sometimes change, you know? So oftentimes, you know, when we've had those and, you know, and Jennifer's brought some, you know, to us, you know, it's, well, positions have changed, their responsibilities have changed, they've consolidated positions. And, and so that's why we, you know, we act on those. Seniority stuff's come automatically. So that's not something that we act on. That's just, that's part of the contract, um, is how that happens. But this is really about how do we, you know, how do we figure out? Normally it would simply be, you know, what are we going to give the, the non-union people the same as we gave the union people? But because we gave two unions different things, this is kind of the quandary that we're in.
I'm shocked. This is the first time this has come up. But, yeah.
Well, the ones, I haven't had a chance to look at these for a long period of time, but I'm assuming the one, sheet one, these are, because it looks like administrator, administrator, prosecuting, registered deeds, um, way down through here, MSU extension.
These are sheet one.
I'm going to ask you this too. I thought because MSU extension has a millage and I thought they, they gave, I mean, they're separate from the county. Aren't they? Or Lake Parks? I thought they used to give their, if they were going to give a raise, they gave it and they came to the county and asked if they could do this, you know, they had the extra money. I didn't realize that, um.
We had, there one employee, and you see that individual listed there of MSU extension is actually a county employee. And, um, you know, it's that funny in a relationship between, between things. So.
So she works here at the county, then the courthouse here?
She works for MSU extension on four H issues, but she is a county, she's in the county system. We're working to change that, by the way, but you know, that's, I mean, talk about kooky things that we have here in our class comp system, that's one of them, but. And, and yeah, she's, she's paid by a millage and some of these others might be too. But the question is not where does the money come from? But what tool, what scale has been used to determine what amount they'd be paid?
Okay, well, let me ask you this. The MSU extension, does that money come out of the county budget or out of the MSU extension millage?
Are you asking where her wages come from? Are you asking where her wages come from?
Yes.
They come from the MSU Extension millage.
Okay.
Which is considered a county employee, that's why she's there.
Right, it's kinda like road patrol, you know, road patrol, there's a millage that funds road patrol, but they're still county employees.
Yeah. Um.
So Tracy, I guess my question is, is that, when you look at the differences of scales this year, we have some rule that these folks are supposed to be paid under the G, GELC wages, is that, is that what it is? I mean, is, because of what they do, that moves into that bracket, or?
No, it's not bracket. Think about.
To that, to that union scale? I mean.
Yes.
So when you look at the two veterans that are here, and you, and you got the gentleman who just retired, who else is in the office? I mean, who, who are they, who are they supervisors over?
Well, um, I'm, I, I think maybe you've kind of wandered off into another area. On the list on page one, w- we do not have the fellow who just retired, actually. I.
No, 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 I just said the, the two employees there. I mean, we don't have anybody else in there besides him, besides them, do we? We don't have anybody else in there besides those two employees?
Correct. But you have to ask yourself why these two folks who do veteran services are on a pay scale that corresponds with a union that has nothing but court people in it, court employees? And that, that's really the issue.
Yeah. I see you have Terry Ball on here. When she takes over this next year, the treasurer, she will make treasures amount of money.
Yeah. But currently, she's the HR person. That's why she's there.
Oh, I see. So to pay her from here now until December, okay.
Again, you really wanna think of these as positions rather than people, but.
I was just gonna say that.
But it's so hard to do that, you know, which is why we've gone ahead and listed the employees. It, it brings it to life for you. So, I mean, I, I could have had, uh, HR officer, um, you know, and, and listing what they, sort of their working title, except we don't have working title, but, um, but instead, I'm just showing you who currently occupies.
I mean, you know, you've got all these commission on aging workers, they're definitely not in the court system, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
I think this is what we're trying to understand, that because they're not in the court system.
Do they have, they all have, some of these guys have, um, millages. Do they have that money in the millage to pay these wages?
Well, you know, and I think that kind of goes back to Georgia's point, that, you know, it'd be a very different discussion, though for me, quite frankly, it wouldn't be, but I may be the only one. It'd be a very different discussion if we were kind of looking at this going into a budget year, but we finalized our budget. And, and, you know, Jan, to your point, it's a good question, and, and I don't think, you know, anybody can necessarily say, you know, I mean, we, you know, because I think, you know, if I'm, you know, the head of commission on aging, for example, I probably based my budget on what, you know, salaries and, and benefits that I thought I was going to be paying, you know, based on what, what's been done in the past. And so.
That's kind of why you take out a millage is to, I mean, there's a lot of.
There is, and, and that's, and you're right, Jan, um, the, the millages do pay for that. The si, but, point is, all these positions, administration, COA, prosecutor, all those going down there, don't look at the names, just look at those positions. They do not belong in the court system. And in, and it's common, common thinking, you don't want to put somebody from commission on aging in the court system, the court union. And so, that apparently, I'm beginning to understand now, apparently, years back, that position, not the person, but the position was put into the court system. And when the courts get a union contract, whatever the court, whatever the union contract for the court system was, these people were in, enjoyed that, whatever that was. Right? That, that's, that's what's going on now. But the real situation is, these people do not belong in the court system. They're not classified into this, they're not classified into court system, but they're, I mean. Yeah, they are.
No, that, they're, they're, they're not, that their functional duties do not correspond with court, which is, which is why it's odd that they are on that.
But their pay scale is, that's, that's the anomaly, you know? Like you say, you know, whether it was intentional, you know, because I don't know, um, you know, when I saw, saw the memo, I was kind of surprised, as you probably were, Tracy, when you discovered this, you know, you know, and we don't know the, the backstory or the history.
We don't.
Of it, you know, it's, it, you know, maybe it was intentional, maybe, you know, the idea was, we're gonna pay them on, you know, the lower scale.
I think we can all agree that now that we've discovered that, something has to happen.
Sorry about that.
But, but my point, but my point is, it, it can, to me, it can happen within the, uh, 2021 budget year, because we've already done our budget year for this time. And so the system that the, these positions are in now, according to whatever union they're, they were connected with, in my opinion, should be, remain with that connection until we get this sorted out for the next budget year. Then we, then we're all, we're gonna have to go back and redo.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, I think so too.
You know what I'm saying? I, I think I'd rather see that, get it all sorted out and, and talk about it, and put it into the next budget year, so, so that we all know going forward, that's what we should have been, been doing all along. And, and I don't think we're gonna disagree, we don't disagree with what's happened. I think we just gotta figure out how to do it forward, not, to, to do it now, I think, would, in my opinion, disrupt the budget. And I, I don't like to do that if I have to, don't have to, but that's my opinion.
So I'm, I'm hearing you say that we would, uh, if, if this is what you decide to do, we would, again, identify these positions next year, make sure there haven't been changes, and would budget them into the budget next year, um, having them jump to the, uh, more appropriate pay scale. Am I understanding the concept correctly?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just have one question. Okay, and, and just kind of hear me out, let me, I'm thinking out loud. So you've got, you've got a few people here that have millages, and say, we'll just say commission on aging, and they have extra money there, and they've got people that's been there for a while, and they've been, they've been, um, coming to work every week and every day, and, uh, they wanna take and give them, uh, a raise. Are they, are the people that work at commission on aging or MSU, are they union people, or they're non-union?
It depends on what their position is. The people on this list are not in the union.
But are any of the people, are any of the people at commission on aging?
Yes.
Or there?
Yes.
The cooks are on union, okay. And how about with, like, the library or the libraries or MSU?
Libraries.
We get, they have a millage, but.
Yeah, but we don't have it, we don't pay those people.
Okay.
We're just talking about the people that we.
They're not county employees.
Yeah, and, and Jan, I can't off the top of my head, you know, tell you, uh, what every union employee is, however, um, y- you know, Terry has those lists, and, um, I can tell, I can tell you that the positions listed on page one of the document I've given you are not union employees.
Okay, that's what, I guess that's what I need to know. Okay.
Not union, not opt-out, not court.
Okay.
I, I, I agree with George that we ought to probably wait on this for the next budget, but somewhere down the road, somebody just said that we're gonna pay these folks that are non-union, we're gonna pay them under this number, and we picked, we picked the scale out, and it happened to be under the court system. It doesn't mean that they're working in the court system, doesn't mean they qualify to work in the court system, means we selected that number to pay them.
Right.
In that system. So it's not a matter of they're not working in the court system, so why pay them as a court system employee? And they're not working in the, this other, the other, uh, union either. I mean, they're not in the union. And so somebody selected a number or a, or a scale to pay them under, keep them close. So I guess with saying that they're working in the court system, or we're paying them in the court system scale, I don't think that's fair to whoever made this decision. They've selected that number, said we're gonna pay them X amount of dollars with this number right here. If they got a two percent raise, we give them a two percent raise. And they've selected that number. The second number seems to be a little bit higher, because that union negotiated something a little better.
Uh, in years past, in years past, that's probably the case. But these folks were not a part of the bargaining unit, and so we don't know why they got jumped into a bargaining unit that has a less favorable pay scale. We just don't know.
If you turned it around and they were above, if they were in the other scale, would we be asking to come, have them come back?
Right, well, it, it's Sam, exactly. That was my, that's kind of where I started, you know, where it, it's like, you know, I mean, this has been their condition of employment for as long, I'm assuming for as long as they've been employed. And so that's why I don't feel, you know, a compelling need to, to change that, you know, to, to, to bump them up, so to speak. But along the same lines, that was my other point, you know? And to me, it's not about which direction it's going, it's, this has been what they've expected, what they, and, and what we've, we've given them. And, and I would say, exactly, you know, I mean, if all of a sudden we said, well, hey, you know, they're actually getting paid on this scale, and this scale's higher, and, and, and they're not working in that building that, that those people are working in, I, I wouldn't say, no, we need to, we need to take that away from them. You know, I, I just think, again, we don't know the, the circumstances of why that was chosen, and again, maybe at one point, you know, that was a better scale, maybe there was something else in there, but, but I don't, I don't necessarily feel this need that we've gotta fix it, because it's being based on a, a, a contract that is, is about proximity and, and location. Um, you know, they're different positions. Now, it's a different issue if it's someone who opts out, because if they opt out of the union, they still have to get what that union, what they would've gotten in that union.
Yeah, and we'll get to that in a moment.
Another, another question I have to ask is, are any of those people at a point where they need a step increase? Like, are, because that was.
Unless you're topped out, every employee by rights gets a step increase. Here, we don't even tie it to performance.
Right, those are automatic, those are long-term increases.
That's automatic.
And they got a percentage raise, whatever this union got, we negotiated with this union, and.
No, next, next issue, Sam, we're not there yet.
Oh.
We're not there yet.
Well, I think we've got a general consensus that we should just leave this alone and, and go, the next budget year, let's discuss this. Am I, that's all, a general consensus? Cause I don't, we don't need to do any action on that. So you got the idea, Tracy, from that one? Can we move on?
Hang on, getting the notes here, bring back to discuss during next budget season.
Yeah.
Let me get the note, cause it'll be gone. Okay. But, that was fun, but we're not done. Um, the next issue then is, should non-union employees receive the wage increases or the payouts that were negotiated by the unions? And this is why it matters that you know what category of employee we're talking about. And I tried, I, I've, I've mapped those out on page one of the memorandum. Obviously, the dues-paying union member, they get what was negotiated. They're subject to the contract, they get it, that's easy. No, s- uh, second are what I call the opt-outs. These are employees who would fully qualify to be a union member, but they have made the decision that they are not going to financially support the union. By law, these folks still get everything that was negotiated by the union. So the opt-outs still get what the union membership gets. This is why I think you were, yeah, I'm gonna leave that there. Next, the third, number three on the memo, uh, department heads. These are employees who do not qualify for union members. And this is a group that you're going to be considering in the question that I'm gonna submit to you in a moment. And then fourth are contract employees. We have folks here who work on contract, that includes me, it includes a financial administrator, court administrator, uh, one of our, um, our soil erosion inspector, and some others. Those folks negotiate their contracts with us, uh, at the end of each contract period. So that's how those wages get adjusted. So the question becomes, do you want to apply the, the benefit of what was negotiated with the unions to these folks who are not in the unions? Now, if you understand the question. Now, the history on this is not all to, I'm sorry?
Go ahead, uh, go ahead.
The history on this is not altogether clear, and so that, you know, that, that, that's a problem for those of us, you know, who come along later. Um, i- it seems to be submitted to you folks periodically, I don't know if it's every contract period, I just don't know the history and haven't experienced that much of it with you. You, you know, should you make, so i- i- you make this decision of whether this should apply or not into home. But then I, I would like you to consider, is this a policy decision you are making that is at the very least presumptive going forward, or do you want to make a decision just for this contract period? And it really is helpful to have a policy so that, um, it creates certainty for budget preparation. Um, you've been discussing that as it related to the other question, and, and also, it, it's helpful for employees to know, uh, what the policy is. Now, if you, uh, pass a resolution, um, memorializing this, um, that, that you want to do this, or, or you don't, either way, um, y- you know, resolutions can be amended or rescinded. Um, so it's not like you're locked in forever. But the question becomes, the question, that's a long discussion, but it's actually an attempt to, you know, give you all the subparts, but also to narrow it for you. You are looking at a group of employees that are not union members, they are not eligible for union membership, um, as the, the first group. Let's set aside the contract folks for a minute. On pages two and three of the spreadsheets that you've been given, let me break this down for you. Um, all the folks on the left side, I, let's start with page two, which relates just to GLC. All of the folks on that left chart, don't worry about them, they are the union members, they're gonna get what was negotiated with GLC. It's the folks on that right, uh, sheet there, and I don't know how many there are, you know, twenty some odd, um, that I'm, we're showing you the budget impact of giving them the two and a half percent payout, because that's what was negotiated with GLC. GLC, and I'm just talking about one year now, GLC, we negotiated a two and a half percent payout, nothing on base. So the im, the budget impact, the fiscal impact of doing this, um, that is giving the, the, uh, two and a half percent payout to the non-union members would be almost twenty-six thousand dollars. We have that number highlighted for you down there, twenty-five thousand, eight hundred, twenty-eight dollars and change. Let me go to TPOAM, because it's the same issue, just different numbers. This is on page three now of the spreadsheet that we handed you. This, with TPOAM for the first year, we negotiated one percent on base and a one and a half percent payout. There are just two, four, what, six or seven folks on the right side, that right spreadsheet, the right table, it's cost for non-union members is the caption. It's those folks, you can see what the one percent would be, what the one and a half percent payout would be, and the total impact there of providing what was negotiated with TPOAM is nine thousand, two hundred, fourteen dollars and forty cents. I wanna check my numbers on that, that's a ballpark, because of course, we got the two pay scales, and I didn't check with Terry to make sure we have them on the right pay scale, but this gives you an idea. Um, so the total financial impact, if this is what matters the most, is the twenty-five, let's call it twenty-six thousand, and let's call it nine thousand, so you're at thirty-five thousand. If you provide the non-union members what was negotiated with the union. And that again, is for those that are not union members, not eligible for union membership, and not contract employees. You, I, I've shown you a little bit of history, some of the documents we were able to dig out, that's in the memorandum. Um, not too helpful, but, um, that's another argument for, for policy and creating. and creating policy so that we're not digging through the archives.
Okay. I do have a little history on this. I'm here for these contracts. And it's been policy, if you want to call it that, of the board.
Practice.
Practice. I'll be staying correct. It's been practice of the board to give those people on the right side the same as the people on the left side got.
Well put, well put.
So that's been our practice. I am in favor of continuing that practice like we've done. These folks know the practice. They know what's happening. And I think it would be remiss if we just didn't continue that practice.
Yeah, I do too. And I got to tell you that they passed a law that you do not have to belong to the union.
Of course.
And they could negotiate on their own. I mean, they could say, okay, we'll start negotiating. By the way, who, who all was part of the negotiation when you did this? You would have had the union people?
Oh, the union people, Tim and myself and Tracy.
Okay. And who from the group was there? Was there anybody?
From the union?
No, not from the, yeah, from the union.
Oh, I can't remember. Tracy might.
With TPOAM, with TPOAM, it was Mary Kay Hunter, Erica Dunman, and their representative, Dan Coon. For GELC, and that, the, the employees are, this was their first negotiation round. For GELC, it was Jason Owen, who is their representative. We've seen him before. He's very experienced. Amanda LaBaron, who has served in that role for a very long time. And Pam Ewart. I think it was Pam again this year.
But for the court system, Jennifer Wood was present.
Excuse me. Yeah, Jennifer Wood, Tim, Terry Ball was in the room as scribe. I was there and...
Chris was in backup.
And Chris was in the back doing our number crunch.
I just was wondering on that. Well, I agree with you, George, on giving both the same amount.
My question is, is that we, we have them classified under the TPOAM. We're going to give them the ELAC or whatever that is.
No.
At 2.5%.
No.
No.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the cost of the non-union members, GELC was 2.5%. They must have negotiated that contract was 2.5%?
GELC, GELC negotiated 2.5% payout this year.
How about TPOAM, what did they negotiate?
TPOAM, it's on page three. They negotiated a 1% pay increase. It's in the right, the right two columns, 1% on base and a 1.5% cash payout. TPOAM.
Okay, so...
Sam, did that answer your question?
So you're just, you're going to just do the 2.5% then? Because they got, they got 1% on base in the payout.
I think you're confusing the two agreements. The folks that are listed on the right table on the sheets would get what that union got. So on page two, the GELC folks who got a 2.5% payout, your question is, do the folks listed on the right side get that? Similarly, on page three, you see that on the, on the left side of the sheet, that that union negotiated 1% on base and 1.5% payout. And listed there are all the union members that are going to get that because they are union members or because they are eligible for union membership. The folks on the right, the question for you is, they are, you know, they're not union members, not eligible. Do you want to give them, them also that 1% and that 1.5% payout? The question is the same, it's just the numbers that are different. My recommendation, for what it is worth, is to continue what I think has been a practice. And that is to provide these folks what, what the corresponding type of union has negotiated. One, it's been a practice. Two, it's a way that we can just be good to employees. But three, if you don't, you see, some of these folks are like section leaders. They have some kind of supervisory role. If you don't, pretty soon, they're not going to, they're going to be making the same or less than the people they supervise if you continue that going forward.
Right. I would agree with, with George and Jan that, that, yeah, I mean, I think we, you know, we should continue to do this. I think we kind of assumed that we would. Though I would say that, you know, I mean, it is practice, and that's what it is. You know, we, we can't bind future boards to doing this. It's just something that I believe needs to be done, you know, the way we do it, you know, because it's kind of like, you know, it comes, it's kind of like negotiations, you know, we can't bind future boards beyond the length of a contract that we enter into, you know, to do something or not to do something. And I know for our employees, sometimes that, you know, it'd be nice to know for sure that they're going to get what the union gets, but I, that really is up to the board.
Well, it sounds like we can tell them that it has been practice, but it is not policy.
Right.
I believe that would be correct. We'll have to have a motion of approval.
Yeah, I'd like to say one thing, though, before we do this. So you're going to give, on these, the union and non-unions, both the, the percentage that they made the agreement on, on both two and one?
No, not one.
Or, I'm sorry, one and two, one and two.
Two and three. Ages two and three.
Okay.
One was the one we, one was a completely different subject. We put them up to the
But I'm going to tell you this too. These guys are non-union people, and whatever you're, if you're going to do that with this, then you need to give these guys something.
All the same people. What are their names?
This one, I read here?
Yeah. So here's, here's what, here's what you're thinking, is that, when you go back to page one, and I know we've already settled that.
But that's why...
You want to move their base up. You want to move their base up to the GL, GELC. You want to move that base up. And, but I don't have any problem, because they both could have negotiated 2.5 points. I don't have a problem giving them 2.5 points. But then you want to come back next year and move this base up to take them out of the court system, which they don't work in, but they really don't work in the other system either.
Yeah, they do.
Somewhere, but somewhere they took that number and said, we're going to put them in this union and give them that base. I mean, so I don't have a problem giving them the 2.5 points. But I think we need to look at this other thing here. I mean, you're looking at 70 grand, 60 grand. You need to be done with all the money. You're looking at 60, 70 grand out of this year's budget.
No, I'm sorry. What, where does 60 or 70 grand come from?
If you take the 35, 753 and the 25, 828.
You did both.
No, 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 no. No, no, because...
We're going to talk about that next year, but that'll be something next year. Go ahead.
You're not putting the 38.
There, there's overlap, so it's not correct to add them. Because the folks that are on page one are incorporated in page two.
I see that.
Even if you don't change their salary scale, they still are subject to this question of do they get what the union was negotiated?
But just for an example, if, if the, the one union negotiated 1.5%, and, and we're really, we're going to give these guys the 2.5% raise, because we're giving it to them under the GELC, but really, both the unions negotiated the same 2.5 points. So that seems fair to give them the 2.5-point raise. But when you look at back here on page one, I mean, we're going to talk about this next year, is that then you want to move them up from this, from the TPOAM, want to put them in the GELC salary. And that would be, if we were doing that all this year, that would be 50, 60 grand more.
Yeah, they would, they would benefit a great deal. That, that's right.
Yeah.
I mean, it would be, but you know, Sam, corrections.
When you look at the GEL, the TPOAM union, if they would have negotiated 1%, would we have given them 1%? Or would we give them the, the other guys are smarter, and we, we give them the 2.5? Both guys negotiated 2.5. I don't have a problem giving them 2.5. But what if one, one union negotiated 1% and one negotiated 2%?
That's exactly what we're dealing with here, and why, why question number one came up. Yeah, that, that's how we discovered issue number one, and why it's so important, and I keep trying to do this, to, to, as an analytical scheme, you have to separate these issues. But any correction, any correction is often expensive.
So you're saying, like, taking care of everybody is $35,042.77 by the end of the year?
Yeah, well, that...
By the end of a year.
Yeah, that would have been the, the right side of the paper, given them what the left side's got.
Yeah.
Which is practice. And, and Chris knew that going into it. It's in the, you know, he's got the...
It's in the budget.
It's not, it's not. Well, it'll take a budget adjustment, but there's...
It was anticipated.
Yeah.
Right. I'd like to move that, can we continue that practice?
I'll second that.
Move supported, that we continue the practice of what the unions get, the non-union members get. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I want to know, Sam, how do you feel about it?
What?
I, I think that's fine, because they're both at 2.5%. But what if, what if we had a negotiation at 1% and 3% for some reason?
Well, that's...
Then what do you do? Where, where do you pick that, where do you pick that horse?
2%. Serious, I'm serious. That's what I would do. I would split the difference.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
That's why you guys put me on the negotiating team, right? I gotta, I gotta, again.
No.
It'll be a big discussion if you don't get them even next time. Whatever the difference is, I'm for everybody to get a fair wage, but...
Well, I could tell you the story about that too, but ask the clerk to roll.
Commissioner Landrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bunty?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes. Okay.
There's one more question for you.
Oh, hold on.
I'm out of paper.
There's one more question for you.
Okay.
And that is, and, and by the way, remember that courts don't have to follow any of this. Just because the way courts are set up, we know that. You know, I, I think they certainly look at what we do and, and attempt to make some, some consistency, but you know that piece. Let's cover the contract folks. It is, I believe, that anyone works, who works on a contract should not receive what a union negotiates, because they are on contract and can negotiate with their employer, you, me, at the end of every contract period. I'm asking that these folks not be included in the decision you just made.
I don't think they were. I didn't, I wasn't...
I think we're just talking to none, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I'd like, I would like, I'd like a decision on the record from you on this. Believe me, it helps me. It helps me.
I amend that back to just say...
You're out of paper?
No.
Enough to do.
I have a sheet.
A little levity here. Okay.
I will take a sheet.
Administrator has asked us to clarify the fact that contract employees will be subject to their own negotiation and not to any thing the board has, anything the board has decided to do for policy with the union and non-union employees.
That the decision you just made does not apply to employees working on contract.
Somebody want to show?
Want to go back and redo that, or you want a new motion?
Just a new motion is fine. This is so complex, let's not undo anything that we've actually managed to do.
I make a motion something.
All right. I make a motion that, under the, doing the 2.5% payout for the non-union members does not include the contract labor employees. They can negotiate that on their own.
That, that union negotiated agreements do not apply to contract employees.
That's just what I said.
Yep, I think that's what he said, Tracy.
I just said that. That's what he said, Tracy. I'm a mascot.
Sorry. I just heard 2.5%. I, something's going on here.
Andy's, Andy's got it written down. Want to read that back, Andy?
Okay. That the decision just made does not apply to contract employees. Union negotiations do not apply to contract.
Employees.
Yeah, got it.
Or, or employees working on contract.
Does not apply to employees.
Okay. Do we have a support?
Support.
Move supported. Do we have any other discussion? Bearing none, I ask the clerk to call a roll when she gets a moment.
Okay, I, I'm sorry. I do need to ask for a motion in a second.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Bunty?
Yes.
Landrick?
Yes.
Okay. Can we go on now, Tracy?
Well, I think so. You've answered my questions. I've worn myself out, so...
I hope so. I'm tired.
This was a hard one. Thank you for hanging in there with me.
Okay, folks, we got two contracts up for approval. Tracy's is just a rollover, no additional funding or wage increase or anything like that. And we can go to Chris first.
Can I, I want to ask one question on that. See, how much do you make?
Yeah, my contract is public record. It's been presented to you each year at approval. My salary, my base salary is 92,500.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I just wanted to, I couldn't remember.
All right.
Thanks.
What Chris is asking is that instead of a one-year contract, we would move into a three-year contract. I checked with our legal counsel. He said there's no problem in doing that. The basic contract is all the same. All the outs are all the same. It's just that we don't have to address it on a three-year basis.
Does, does Tracy want a three-year contract?
No. In fact, we can, by statute. Until she's been here for five years, I believe.
Years. In an even-numbered year, for some goofy reason, your administrator's contract can only be extended for one year. In odd years, like next year, it could be extended for more than one year.
I think it's because of the elections.
Oh, that could be. Yeah. That could, that could be, but...
That makes sense.
I was just thinking the fifth year, odd year. Okay.
Yes.
Anyway, I got Chris's in front of me, I believe.
So, on the compensation figure, that's what it is. If that's not a change?
It's not changed. Okay? All we're doing in that contract is, and Chris's contract is making it from a one-year to a three-year.
I make a motion that we take Chris, what's his last name?
Oosterhout.
Oosterhout.
Ooster...
Oosterhout. For you to say.
Oosterhout. Sorry about that, Chris. That we extend his contract to a three-year contract, which would make that 2003.
Okay.
Or 23, 2023.
We have a support?
Support.
Move supported. Do we have any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye. Was that to be ruled?
Oh, shoot.
I do it once, at least once every meeting, I do this. Roll call.
Commissioner Landrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bunty?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, now, we go on to Tracy's, and that's just a one-year renewal.
I make a motion that we renew Tracy Corr's contract to 2022.
Through 21.
21.
21, I'm sorry, 21.
Through, through, through 2021 fiscal year.
When is?
November. It's actually November of 2021.
Okay, so it's November...
2021.
20...
21.
21.
Yeah.
Okay.
Support? Excuse me, support?
Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Landrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes. Well, I'm trying to get through these as quickly as possible for, we've got some people, a person that needs to leave, and I'm trying to get as much as we can. All right, Department of Human Service, two applications to be on their board. One, Carol J. Lehman, who has been on the board, and she's replied again. And Judy Zamorron, an application to be on that board. The board only has one member that is expired this year, and that's, and Carol's position expired. She has re-applied for that same position.
Also, I noticed on her application, it doesn't say what the position is. It's missing.
Okay, so, I would recommend that we would stay with, I did not get any, any correspondence, it's all from Human Service. Uh, so I would have to assume that they would, would not have any objection for Carol Lehman to be reappointed.
I would like to see us reappoint her, but I'd also like to see us hold on the application to this Judy Zamorron, for maybe something else that comes up that we can notify her.
Yeah.
Because she had a good, she brought a nice piece here.
Yeah.
I would, I would move that we reappoint Carol Lehman to the position.
Move supported?
Support.
Move supported, any other discussion?
Yeah, and, and I think just generally when, you know, when people do a good job on a board, we have a hard enough time getting these people on boards, we don't want to kick them off. But I think Jan's point is well taken about, you know, keeping, if anybody wants to serve on boards, it's always good to keep their, keep their number on speed dial.
Yeah. Keep, put that back in your archives there.
Yeah, you just, and you never know, I mean-
Do you have any openings? You know, do we have any openings up here yet?
Uh, we have a lot of them that are coming due at the end of December, that will be-
Well, it can always let this lady know.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, an ask clerk call roll.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Landrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes. Okay, we've got a Republican Board of Canvassers, partial term ending ten thirty-one. Application was by Whitford. I'd like to move that we approve that. Okay, do we have a support?
Oh, oh, go ahead.
Move supported, any other discussion? All in favor, ask clerk call roll.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Landrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes. Okay. Building Authority, what do we got here?
We're going to wind this thing down.
Uh, oh, this is the resolution to, to continue with the building authority, but put it into, off balls, if you will.
This, this is simply a resolution to memorialize the decision that you made at your last meeting, which was to continue the building authority as a legal entity, but to allow it to go dormant. The other, the other thing that has come up is it was discovered that there's five thousand and change in the building authority account. It's appropriate that that move over just into the county general funds. And so I believe that that's included in the resolution also. In putting that piece together, I've been in contact with Mary Sullivan, who serves as treasurer for that body. So, again, the resolution just says what you decided last time, plus that piece about how to handle the residual.
I have a question for you, Tracy. So say a year from now, something comes up that they have to redo the planning commission, do they have that five thousand? Do we give it back to them, or can they have access to it, or does it just dissolve and go away?
Well, this is completely different than the planning commission. This is a separate legal entity that provides an alternative funding mechanism for large capital projects. Think about, say, building a new jail. By keeping this entity alive, what we can do at that time is appoint members, set a meeting schedule, and, and then there would be a determination about how the funding would happen. In the past, there's tended to be the, the issuing of bonds for these projects. So that, that piece would, would, would get worked out. Frankly, I don't have experience with these things to know if we'd need to throw a little seed money in an account, but, but, but generally, the projects and what these groups, what the building authority has overseen has been, you know, bond, bond issues.
Big project, still.
I move we adopt the resolution.
Support, move supported, any other discussion? Ask clerk call roll.
Commissioner Landrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Okay, at this time, I will take a motion to recess our normal meeting, go to our finance meeting.
Support.
Ask clerk call roll.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Landrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Okay, I'll call to order the meeting of the finance full board. Chris, financial administrator's report?
All right, good evening, I'm going to start with our cash report here. You will see for the end of fiscal year twenty twenty, our cash balances, their general fund at five point nine million dollars.
Can you make it a little bigger? There you go. Thank you.
Five point nine million in our general fund, which is fairly reflective of what it was two years ago. You'll also know, if you've read through some of the packet, that during September, we did make the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar payment to our OPEB fund. So this cash balance is reflective of that. Does anybody have any questions related to that?
No.
All right, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to move on to our checks that were issued for the month of September. Usual formats, you'll see checks that were over ten thousand dollars in one report, and then a complete check registered for the month of September. Give you a moment to look those over and answer any questions that you may have.
You know, I had to check on a couple of those, no pun intended. Dum dum. You know, there's, there's a check in there to brains, and I thought, huh, I didn't know if that was an administrative thing or what, but, but it turns out they're a psychological testing firm, so I assumed that was through the courts, but a backtrack.
Brains. Brains, I think we've had that one before.
Yeah, I, I didn't catch it before, and then, so I looked it up, and there are a couple other ones that I just, they're, they're new, but they all made sense then when you backtrack them through the account that they're paid from.
Yeah, I, I, I remember that one, yeah, when I seen it.
Okay, it doesn't sound like there's any questions, Chris, if you want to continue.
Okay, um, I do not have any information on the investments, receipts, or bank transfers. You're more than welcome to forward those questions on to the treasurer, myself, or the administrator, and we can get those to the treasurer. If you'd like, I can move on to section D one, budget amendments.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna, I summarized it nicely in a memo, what we're looking at here. And it, and it fell into line pretty much exactly where we expected it to, I'm guessing that's what you're going to see too, Mr. Landrick.
I have a question on the budget amendments needed.
Okay.
Um, I see you got three thousand three hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-three cents going to the county commissioners, what is that for?
He didn't get a raise?
No.
I don't see it.
I don't see any money going to the board of commissioners.
It says budget amendment needed.
Can you see my screen?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's the county administrator, sorry about that.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, I read that wrong. I even circled it yesterday. Damn, I want a raise. I'm just kidding, yeah.
So we have, we have three items under consideration in the general fund for our current year budget that I'm looking for amendments. Uh, item number one is the union raises. In the general fund, the union raises came to sixty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's pretty much dead on exactly where we thought they would be while we were negotiating them. The court administrator's contract was approved by the judge while I was home on vacation, and I added this in here quickly. If her contract were to be approved, which the judge did approve, I added in twelve hundred dollars and, or one thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars into the general fund to cover the new contract. One thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars into the special revenue fund, which is front of the court, to cover the other half of her contract, where the other half of her salary is. And the third item in the general fund is the drain commissioners is looking to, would, would like to fill a position that has been vacant for four years. Uh, that position is a deputy drain commissioner. Working with human resources, the amount to fill that position would be sixty-one thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Those three items would be coming from the general fund. Sixty-one thousand for the union raises, twelve hundred for the court admin contract, sixty-one-one for the position to be filled. So in order for you guys to make that decision, you need to see where that would put us. Before I work this in, our surplus was one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So when we take out the union raises, we take out the new position, we take into account the court administrator's new contract. But the wild card here was, a couple weeks ago, the state of Michigan told us that they were going to reinstate the fourth quarter of the county-state revenue sharing. And we did not budget for that, uh, because at the time, it was not looking like that, that promise, previous promise to us would be kept. So when we reinstate that state revenue sharing into our general fund, that's an increase of two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars that, of money that was not previously budgeted being infused back into our general fund. Taking into account all three of those budget amendment expenditure raises, our new surplus would be just shy of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars next year.
Did you drag the lance and you pick that check up?
No, but I will.
Make it certified.
You're right, absolutely. I will, I will do both of those.
I think you should get it in cash, just in case.
I don't think that, that, um, any auditor would recommend a, a process like that, but if you want me to and you tell me to, um, no, I probably won't.
I just want to make sure the, the check will cash.
They send it ACH, so it's not a problem.
Yeah, it's electronic transfer, so I, so when we get it, we'll know we have it, so. So when we go back into regular session, we'll need a motion basically approving, and unless someone has questions on any of these individually, we'll just need a motion to approve the budget adjustments as presented in the full.
Now, unfortunately, it is important to use the term amendment versus adjustment.
No, thank you, yep. It isn't-
So the amendments that would be approved would be-
Because the budget's done, so.
Would be the spreadsheets, and I'm just going to open them up and very quickly present them to you so you know exactly what, I'm, I'm not going to go through them, but just, these, these would be the numbers that would be amended.
Okay.
How's there, anything, any questions that I can ask about anything in particular?
Chris, this is probably not really directed for you, it's probably for Tracy. Hiring a new deputy drain commissioner, how's that handled? Is that through drain office, or is that through the court system, or the courthouse here? Is that through you, Tracy, how's that work?
Well, I was first trying to make sure that we could secure the funding, and then, yes, that would, um, through Bernie, Terry, and, and Tracy would collaborate then on, on listing that position, soliciting, um, applications.
Yeah, Tracy's on the phone right now, but I can tell you that Bernie and Terry have been talking on how to do that.
Joe, I thought Joe did that, Joe Shorwood.
It's just, it was several years ago, that position was abandoned, and he hasn't had, it's on the books of being able to have one. But now he sees a need for one, and that's why he's going to do what he's going to do, but, uh, it's all been working, he'd been working through HR on it, and through Tracy.
Yeah, I think Joe's, Joe's title is, I think he's like project manager, I think.
He's like the engineer.
Yep, he's, he's.
Okay.
That's fine, I have it.
Right.
Okay.
The next memo that I had was just simply showing you a couple reports from our, our MERS online portal to show you the balances that we have in our OPEB trust fund account. Uh, in September, we did send another payment over of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So as of nine thirty, we have just over two million dollars in our OPEB fund. And our last actual report had us at a two point three million dollar liability. So, just like I have been telling you, we are almost there.
Excellent.
So not only, not only once this is fully funded, do we obviously stop funding it, but then we can start drawing on it in order to make payments that we have been making pay as we go. So, we won't be sending hundreds of thousands of dollars to this trust fund, and we will be saving hundreds of thousands of dollars that we're sending to our retirees right now for their health. So it's, uh, it'll be a double-edged sword of savings. I just trademarked that.
Hey, Chris, I have a question for you.
Yep.
How does the stock market affect all of this? Like right now, it's, it's right up there, I mean, it dropped there for a while, now it's back up again. Does that, do they, are they in the stock market, or is this like invested, how is it invested? I guess that's the word I'm asking.
Well, currently, we have about twenty percent in intermediate-term bonds. We have sixty percent in short-term bonds. short term bonds. And then 20% is in a of, 5% of our investment is exposed to stocks, to answer your questions.
Okay.
20% of this 20% is in equities.
Is it what?
Equities.
Equities, like stock.
Okay, yeah.
So actually, 4%, not 5%. My apologies.
Okay.
So Chris, was our next OPEB payment going to be, we're still thinking around 350 or so. You're going to fund that and get it squared away?
Well, we're going to get our, our latest actuary report soon, and we'll fund it right up to whatever our liability is, up to $300,000 payment, which you approved for our current fiscal year.
Yeah.
So.
It's got pretty well figured out.
Obviously, I'll wait until closer to the end of the year and let this appreciate a little bit more so we can save ourselves a little bit more money from, you know, contributing to it.
Pay around the last day, buddy.
Yep. And then I've got one more report here to show you if we can, if you prefer to move on.
Yes, go ahead.
This last item here is just to show you the number of COVID-19 related grants that we have been managing here this year at, at Grashit County. We have three new grants that we got through COA. Grants four, five, and six here were through the Michigan State Police. I know it doesn't show that we spent very much of that. In fact, we just submitted the very first F, or financial report for that, and we did request $40,000 rather than this $11,000 that this shows. But we're able to spend that money through the end of the next fiscal year. So should there be emergencies that arise? We do have a little bit of COVID money nest egg here that we can reallocate. Grant number seven here, the first responder hazard pay premium that we've paid out, that the board had approved. The public safety, public health payroll, which was reimbursed to, half of it was reimbursed to us. And then number nine is the coronavirus relief local government grant, which was sent to us in replacement of our state revenue sharing for the last period of our last fiscal year. So all in total, we have applied for $643,000. And we have spent, it's actually a little bit closer to $525,000 to date so far. So it's been our, our management utilization of grants that have been available to us.
You know, Chris, I just want to compliment you. I know, you know, grants are great from our perspective because it's, you know, it's, it's free money. But it's also, I also have worked with enough grants to know it's a lot of work. It's a lot of documentation. It's paying attention to deadlines. And again, I think back to the conference call that we were on back at, you know, kind of the beginning of the pandemic. And, you know, while other municipalities were chatting in the chat box about, you know, they got to do this, they got to do that, they could, you know, they haven't done this yet, you know, you were already on top of all of this stuff. And so it's, we certainly, I think I speak for the whole board when I say we really appreciate this because, you know, we're not talking chump changer, you know, you're talking, you know, when all is said and done, you know, $643,000. And, you know, when I first looked at this, I saw the, the blanks where it says amount received. And I thought, oh, you know, what, and I just saw the, the expiration dates. I said, oh, no, we, we got time. We're good. And for the ones that, that have expired, you know, we've, we've gotten, you know, what we, what we, you know, asked for, we, you know, with this, the way you want to do, you want to spend it all. And we managed to find ways to spend it all. So good job.
That, that conference call that you sat on, that was, we were actually able to abandon that grant because it was only a 75% reimbursement rate. And the state of Michigan came through with several other opportunities that were 100%. And I believe that is all that I have to present to the board tonight.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Chris? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn for the purpose of paying the bills and returning to the regular commission meeting.
I'll move. Support.
Got a motion by Murphy, and I didn't catch who the support was from, from you, Sam?
Yeah, yep.
Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Commissioner Buckey?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes. Okay, we're back to the full board meeting.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. Only one item business that we have to do, and that's the budget amendments, motion to approve the budget amendment. So moved.
I'll second that.
Move and supported. Any other discussion? Ask clerk call roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckey?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes. I don't see anything else on our items. Is there any other public comments at this time?
I'm not seeing anybody.
This is, this is Jennifer Wood. I would, I'd like to make just a brief comment if I could.
Certainly.
I just wanted to give a little history on the pay scale that's being referred to as the TPOAM pay scale. I just wanted you guys to understand that the pay scale actually predates the union. And so the reason all those people are on that pay scale is because that was the pay scale that was in place when the TPOAM was formed. And, and that never, that didn't change. And so it's not like there was a decision made to pay the court employees less, or that they negotiated that in some way. That was the current pay scale in place that covered all of the non-union employees because GELC was in place prior to that. And that covered all of those employees prior to them forming a union. And so I just, I just thought maybe that piece was missing during the discussion.
That's good. So it's the chicken came before the egg, you're saying?
Right. That's right. And I think Sam kind of hit on, kind of hit on that. But I just wanted you guys to understand that that, that's why all of those other employees, at least that's my understanding of why the other employees would be on the same pay scale.
I just want to say that I think we want to be as fair as possible. And sometimes it's really hard if we don't have, so, I mean, I was here probably, I know I was here because I've been here 20 years. And you forget, I forget how things are because I'm not here day to day. So I'm glad that you spoke up and mentioned that.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay. If we have anything else, so out of the line, do we, Matt?
I just want to say that you guys realize today is the 10th, 2020?
Okay.
Now, is the next meeting prior to elections?
Bring it up, Monday.
Monday, okay.
Oh, yeah. It's Monday, the 2nd.
November.
They put some notice out or something. Probably somebody will.
It was on the.
It's on our, it's on our.
Schedule.
Our calendar. It's on our calendar.
Okay.
I just want, thank you for reminding me though. That will be Monday, the 2nd on November at 4:30. Okay. Is there anything else?
No, just, real quick, and I know it's late. I just want to pick up on what's something that Tim said about the coronavirus and how things are handled. I do business in six, seven counties close to here. And, and I think our county managed everything that we got from the government, all the stuff, all the masks, all the stuff, and handed all that out to where people needed it. I, some counties that I'm in, they just didn't know what they were doing. They just gave it all away the first day and didn't manage it well. And, and they didn't get a lot of it. I just think that, you know, everybody who had a part in that was, from the sheriff's office, to the fire departments, getting it to nursing homes and stuff. I just think this county did a really a good job, you know, and nothing to do with me, or us guys. I just think that people that are here did a great job.
A short meeting today with the emergency manager. And they are continuing to work on that.
Yep.
What not, what they're doing now is they're sending out memos to all of the facilities that took PPE before to remind them, they better stock up.
Yeah.
They're low on anything. Get it. If you have a trouble getting it, work with the emergency manager. So they haven't stopped.
Yep.
This whole thing is, they're, they know what they're doing and how to do it.
I just think they did a good job mechanically doing that. And, and like I said, I do some business in other counties that really stumped.
I was really pleased today with, with the report that Mike had given me on what was going on there. I, I, once in a while, I just peek my head in the door out there, see how things are going.
Probably somebody needs these back.
Yeah, I need back.
She works so quietly, but I, I would just like to jump in and say, you know, that procurement, a huge chunk of that was done by Caitlin Lombard. And she works so quietly and doesn't, you know, you know, look for the credit. But you've just got to know what a huge role she played in that. As long as you're talking about it, I'm going to toss that in. Thanks.
There you go. Caitlin was instrumental in countless hours, making sure that, and found things that nobody else could find. It was amazing what you did there. Yeah. All right. Very good. Anything else coming for the body?